...of the City of North Miami and Olita Partners. My name is Pam Solomon from the City of North Miami, and we are ready to begin the Town Hall meeting tonight for the Biscayne Landing. And our city manager, Aleem Gani, will introduce those in attendance today. And we also have our mayor, Acting Mayor Philip Bianameh, here with us. We have Councilwoman Carol Keys. I'm not sure if... We do have availability of seating up here, Mayor, if you'd like. And our city attorney, Regine Monestim, is here as well. So at this time, and our deputy city manager, Dr. Claude, has joined us as well. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Aleem to get started for this evening. We are video recording for our city channel, our municipal channel, Channel 77. We will be airing this meeting on Channel 77 as well as on our YouTube site for the City of North Miami. So those in attendance, tonight, of course, you're hearing the information. But if you have friends and neighbors that live in North Miami and missed tonight's meeting, you can remind them that we will make it available on the channel and on the website. At this time, I present Mr. Gani.
Good afternoon, everyone. Those in the back, I think there's a lot of seats up front if you want to come up. All right, thanks. Is it on? Again, I'd like to welcome everyone. This Town Hall meeting was actually orchestrated by one of the commissioners for the district, Commissioner Scott Galvin, and the other commissioners for District 1 and 2, sorry. One of the things that, why we are here today at this Town Hall meeting is to actually discuss the appraisals that was done on the Biscayne Landings property. The city presently has a lease on this property which entails approximately 70.2 acres of residential out of the 184.3 acres, I believe, on the site. Biscayne Landings or Olita Partners presently holds the lease on this property. As part of that lease agreement, they are exercising an option to purchase, or there's a purchase option as part of their lease agreement. Presently, they are trying to exercise that option to purchase 50.6 acres of the Biscayne Landings property, or the so-called Biscayne Landings property. Three valuations were done, or three appraisals were completed, and these were all independent. These companies, I'll just read a short bio on each one of the companies. Each of the three companies have done their appraisals on the property, have an MAI certification. For those of you, the MAI certification are members of the Appraisal Institute designation. That is like those of us who are engineers or lawyers having our licenses. They could actually lose their practice if something is not done, or something is not done ethically. So I want to make that clear, that all three appraisals will approve MAI members in the industry, and it's a standard appraisers who have done evaluations of valuation on commercial, industrial, residential, and all other types of properties. The first appraisal was done by Integra Realty. Integra provides global commercial real estate valuation, counseling, and consulting services. Their competencies include standard commercial properties such as office, retail, multifamily, industrial, and specialty assets. Integra promises local expertise locally and nationally, over 66 offices nationwide, including a main office in Coral Gables. And the person who worked with us, or who worked with the city on it, was Anthony Grasiano. Robert Gallagher, the second company, is currently the president and owner of Gallagher and Birch Incorporated. Since 1972, he has worked on commercial appraisals throughout Florida and other counties, and other cities, other states, sorry, including Miami-Dade, Broward, and Monroe County. He is a nationally certified instructor with Appraisal Institute, and is a qualified expert in real estate valuation in Miami-Dade, Broward, and Monroe. And Bob Gallagher himself is the one who actually did the appraisal on this property. The third is Robert A. Lewis. Robert, out of all the appraisers, Robert has the most experience on the site. Originally, in 2004, when the city did its original evaluation or appraisal on the site, Robert A. Lewis and Company was the one who actually did the first appraisal on the property. In 2011, he also did the second appraisal at that time. He comes with a wealth of experience, a PhD in his field, and these are the three appraisals who actually did the appraisals on this property. I just want to keep in mind that we looked at six companies, and of the six companies, these are the three that were selected. I'm not going to get into it, but I'll let Jack explain why these three companies were selected. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the mayor for a few words, and I'll introduce Jack Winston from the Goodkin Group, who actually was a consultant coordinating all these appraisals on behalf of the city.
Good evening, everyone. Let me recognize Mr. Greg King, community relation for Congresswoman Frederica Wilson. He's here with us tonight. Tonight, we are here to gather information about Biscayne Landing. And I'm happy to see that a lot of people in the audience, our people, who love the city, who love the city of North Miami, and they would love to see Biscayne Landing moving forward, but at the same time, they want to make sure the project, when it's finished, everybody from the city will be happy, including the developer, including the residents, including everybody throughout the state, throughout the county. Let me recognize some former mayors. Former Mayor Frank Wuland is here with us. Former Mayor Kevin Burns. Let me recognize city-state lobbies. Mr. Warren Book is with us tonight. Like I said before, we are here to get the right information, the first information about this item that's going to be in the agenda next week. Like you all know, a few months ago, Olita Partners proposed, and the city approved, the idea of one, remove the 190 cubic yard field that was on the site. We did not meet the proper requirement, and at the same time, they want to purchase about 50 acres of land to build the 43-plus-hundred units of residency. And we approved that. We did the appraisal, and an agreement will be presented to the council on Tuesday. And I think that's why we are here, to get the proper information, to get your thought about the idea, and for us, as the governing body of the city, to make the right decision, the decision that's going to be benefits to the residents and to Olita Partners. I have with me Councilwoman Carol Keys from District 2, and I know she wants to say something because she's one of the persons who request that Town Hall meeting. And I have also Councilman Scott Galvin. And let me let you know that we're going to have a video available for every council member. That's mean one going to be available for Scott Galvin, who's not here, he's out of town. One will be available for Councilwoman Maria Ellen Steril. And of course, I'm going to have one where I'm going to be able to review it, and I'm pretty much sure Councilwoman Carol Keys will have one also. That's mean, welcome to the great city of North Miami, welcome to the Town Hall meeting. Hopefully, when we get out there, we'll have so much information for City Council on Tuesday the 14th. Again, thank you and welcome, and let me introduce Councilwoman Carol Keys.
Good evening. I'm very happy to see everybody is here, interested in what's going on in our city. Are we going to have time to speak afterwards? Because I'm getting a lot of questions, a lot of bombardment out there in the audience, and what I'm hearing is this is happening very fast, and I agree, and people are concerned with the evaluation, the appraisals. I'm hoping we can get those answers tonight to see how our appraisal was done, whether it was done fairly, and whether we are getting the adequate amount of consideration for this property. We have an agreement, which I have not reviewed yet. I've spoken on terms with the manager, and I know a lot of the terms are up in the air, and I don't, I know that I will not be voting on anything until I see a complete, not totally complete, but an agreement with the major terms agreed to. So you can rest assured that we're not just going to agree to an agreement that we haven't reviewed and talked about. There's a lot of language in the agreement, but it's a little premature to even go into that this evening until it's in print and we all have it in front of us. And one of our biggest concerns that I want you to think about this evening, and everybody's concern, is what we are going to do with this money if we sell the land. Where is it going to go? My proposal has been a purchase-money mortgage, which Olita Partners has agreed to, and we would take a portion of the money now and let them pay us a small increment, a couple million a year, and in the meantime, they will be paying us 5%. So instead of our city holding money, getting maybe a tenth or a half of a percent, we will be getting a nice return on that money, and it will be safe with them. Otherwise, I am going to propose that any money we get, the first 5 million will go into a reserve account that we need, that we put the first 5 million in, and the balance can only be spent with a fourth, fifth majority vote. So a lot of people are concerned if we get the money, that it's going to get spent, and I personally am going to do my hardest, darnedest, to make sure that that money, if we get it, is going to be spent wisely, and it's not going to just be wasted. And I guess we'll get questions later. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I think tonight, as council member, we won't be able to answer all the questions because we're going to have our council meeting on Tuesday, where we're going to be able to review the agreement and which way we want to go, which I meant met, we may need to put in. But what we are doing this afternoon is get information from Olita Partners, especially for you, and get information from the appraisers' company, and for you to ask questions, and we're here to listen to you, your concern. We're going to be able on Tuesday at the council meeting to address those concerns. It's most likely this is why we are here. It's like, we said 20 million, we understand that, well, how do they get to that number? I don't know. I don't have the answer yet. That's why I'm here to listen, and the expert in Olita is going to be able to talk to you, to explain it, and you're going to be able to ask your questions, and we're going to listen to your questions. And throughout this weekend, that's when us, as elected officials, we're going to be able to review the agreement based on your questions. That's when we're going to make suggestions for Tuesday for the council meeting. And Aleem, and can we introduce who's going to, are we going to introduce Olita first, or from the, it's one company, right? Okay.
I'd just also like to mention that Councilman Galvin is out of town, and he wanted me to make sure, you know, I say to everyone he had a Town Hall meeting, that he couldn't attend the meeting because he was actually out of town and he could not be here. But with that, I'd like to introduce Jack Winston from the Goodkin Group. Jack actually worked with me on getting the three appraisals done concerning the methodology, concerning what was valued, what percentages, and all the numbers. And right now, I'd like to present him to go through what method was used in coming up with the appraisal.
Good evening. The three appraisers who were ultimately chosen, as Aleem mentioned, all have the MAI certification, which was part of the criteria. They all have a great deal of experience in working on valuations of raw land and developed land in the Miami-Dade area, and they have all worked with many of the major metropolitan municipalities here in Miami-Dade County. So they have a great deal of experience. And what we did, we, after we selected them, we met in a group with all three appraisers so that we could set forth the criteria by which the appraisers would all go out and independently do their valuation. Essentially, the important thing to realize, for the public to realize, is that the property is encumbered with a 99-year lease and an option to renew for another 99 years. That encumbrance runs with the land, and therefore, what was being valued was the value of the lease interest in the land. That is a very important consideration. That is what the valuation is based on. What is the value of the lease for this particular portion of the property? The lease allows Olita Partners to have the option to buy 50.3 acres of the residential property. That purchase price, based on the criteria from the city, is, will be based upon a appraised value by three appraisers and averaged together to come out with one number. So the resolution that was approved by the city was that the amount would be the average of the three appraisals. So our instructions was to value the leasehold interest in the property. With that comes a couple of caveats. And one of the caveats is that the proportion of the lease represents 33.3% of the total developable land under the lease. And developable land agreed to by Olita Partners and the city and the City Planning Department is 151 acres. The 50.3 represents the 33.3% of that acreage. The other things in the lease which had to be taken into consideration was the term, which from the beginning of the signing of the lease was 99 years, there's approximately 97 years left, and the fact that an option exists for an additional 99 years. The lease spells out all the terms of the lease amount that is to be paid. Any escalation involved was taken into consideration as well. There also is within the lease a profit participation. The profit participation was not valued because that remains with the land, irrespective of the fact that they are buying out the lease interest. So the profit participation, which ultimately inures to the city's benefit, remains on the land. With respect to the lease itself, it then became fairly simple. We all talked about the two major components of doing the mathematical interpretation of the value of the lease, and that is, what is the agreed-upon discount value that the lease will have in order to get to the net present value? That amount ranges between 5 and 6%. The other item that came in was the question of the inflation value, and it was agreed upon that the inflation value would range between 3 and 4%. Using those numbers, each of the appraisers went off and did their own appraisal work, formed their own comps, and came up with their own values. Monday of this week, we all sat down and they presented their final three appraisals. Robert Lewis came up with a value, the net present value of the lease, the first portion of the lease, which is the 99-year lease, he came up with a value of $12,500,000. Gallagher came up with a net present value of the lease today at $19 million. And Anthony Grasiano of Integra came up with a net present value of $21 million for the 99-year portion of the lease. There was an additional factor in, in terms of the reversion factor of the value of the lease at the 99th year, and then bringing it back to the net present value. We use that only for the 99-year lease. There was an additional, additional work done for the second portion of the lease, but I recommend it to the manager that we only can look at the first 99. So the three amounts were $12,500,000, $19 million, and $21 million. According to the city resolution, the average of the three is $17,500,000. That is the net present value of the value of the leasehold on the property, which is basically the whole length of the lease valued back to today's dollars.
Mr. City Manager Pam, and I think next, we're going to, after, you're going to be able to ask questions, and now we have Olita Partners that are going to give us an update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Tillman. So firstly, thank you to the city for calling this Town Hall. I think this is very helpful for everybody, and thank you for everyone taking some time out tonight to come here and hear about the proposed transaction and get an update on Biscayne Landing. So just quickly, we wanted to show where we are currently with the conceptual master plan and give you a little bit more background because I believe it's been a while since you've seen the recent plan. So this is Biscayne Boulevard, 143rd Street, and then 151st Street. Currently to, okay, currently to orient you a bit, we are right here. This area is where the car dealer, Warren Henry, who we have been working with now for the better part of a year and a half on getting them into the Biscayne Landing site to bring three great dealerships, Jaguar, Infiniti, and Range Rover. And then coming through, this area is a mixed-use area, which will include the future hotel area and potentially office or multifamily rental. That remains to be determined. And in the rear, the easternmost section and the southernmost section is where we currently plan for the residential parcels to be. And under the existing plan, we have the ability to build about 4,390 units. And what we're talking about, the 50 acres, runs along the exterior where we show the residential. And in the center, which I'll go into a little further, is the commercial, which we view now as a lifestyle retail center. And we've been talking with several very qualified retail developers who are very excited about the opportunity to bring something that will have shopping, restaurants, and entertainment. So it becomes much more of a place to come, dine, have dinner, go to the movies, and do some shopping as well. One other key thing here to note, you'll see that there's a vast increase in the green space and open space versus what was originally shown about two and a half years ago. This is something that we've been very conscientious about, of trying to increase the public areas and the parks. So over here, you see, this is an active park area, and this is an area that we currently haven't figured out exactly, but could be where a community center would be, could be an area where there could be a future entertainment area. In the rear, we'll be able to connect, hopefully, directly with FIU, provide bike trails and walking trails, as well as to really focus on making this an active and green environment. So just quickly, I know that everyone's been hearing that Biscayne Landing is not moving as quickly as it could, and that's true. However, it's important that everyone understands we've started the first part of the work. And that first part of the work is doing the spine road, doing the mass grading, laying the utilities, and what we call horizontal development and infrastructure. And this is a massive part of the project and critical to our future development. So Herb, if you can come, just quickly point a few things out to everyone.
Well, as you see up on the first projection here, the spine road construction with the arrow pointed to it is about 4,700 lineal feet of roadway that needs to be constructed through the site to carry the infrastructure. That would be the communications, the power corridor, the domestic water supply, and all of the other infrastructure necessary to build a building and actually make it This, these shots here are some shots that were taken during the construction of the, during the initial phases of the construction of the spine road. And if you'll see, this area right here, this is, we have to exert an inordinate amount of dust control on this site because we have so much of the property that's opened up to construction. So we keep water trucks running throughout the site to keep the dust control to down, so that none of the neighboring communities are bothered by any of the migration of dust off-site from these construction activities. Up in the top right here, you see some of the, some of the leveling and the grading that takes place, primary to the actual construction of the roadwork itself. This work has been underway now for some five months. Over to the other side there, you'll see several people that are on the ground. As we move this landfill material from one spot on site to the other, it requires that we take some of the unsuitable materials, such as these tires here, and segregate them from the landfill material before we place it, and then improve the soils on it with compaction methods necessary to hold the integrity of the road together. compaction methods necessary to hold the integrity of the road together. Some similar shots here show different activities that we've experienced during the initial phases of the spine road. Again, to the top right there, you will see some of the large, heavy equipment that is mass-grading the areas where the roadway lays so that the road follows some semblance of a level contour throughout the site. You don't have any steep hills or up or down as you construct the roadway. Again, as you excavate this material, there are several unsuitables that do pop up and we do segregate them, put them in dumpsters, and then recycle them to the various places where they take these things. The tires go to a tire recycling plant up in Jupiter where they are shredded and then turned back into various usable components, such as some of the bedding for the, some of the children's play yards and some other uses such as that. Down to the bottom left, you see some of these heavy pieces of equipment that are carrying the material from one end of the site to the other, again, in an effort to mass-grade the site. To the bottom right, this shows a couple of the engineers out there just checking the elevation so that when we finish this thing, it is true to the intent of the permitted plans. And then up to the top left there, you'll see some of the soils improvement methods that we exercise on the site, which just started about two weeks ago. It's effectively taken a 16-ton weight and dropping it in various portions of the site. Here we have these various areas of construction pointed out to orient you on the site. You see the 151 building at Biscayne up where the pointer is, 151st Street. This is the area where you saw the crane a minute ago dropping the weight. And this is the area where the spine road continues to the south. Another overhead shot shows the spine road as you're looking to the south. It carries down and then makes a loop around and turns back out to 143rd Street that you see where the pointer is following. The retail area, the 30-plus acres or so that you saw in the initial photo, was this area right in here. And then down to the south, you will see the southern residential area described at where the arc is of the laser. Off to the far southwest corner is the active park that we're going to turn back to the city, along with some money to develop it. And then the eastern lobe where the residential component will be is just showed off to the bottom of the picture there. Again, this is a different shot. This is looking to the, to the east. Again, the same areas are called out here, but you see 151 Biscayne down there to the northeast corner. You see, again, this gives you a better idea of what that 30 acres of retail area is. This is a better shot at the eastern neighborhood area where the residential zone is, one of the pieces that we're proposing to purchase. And then the other piece is clearly defined down in this area here for the southern neighborhood. The city is in the process of completing their installation with their contractor of the groundwater remediation system. They're actually laying in the final 16 or 17 extraction wells. We took the liberty of taking some overhead shots so you can see how that all lays out. Again, we're in the east, eastern neighborhood area, the residential zone. These conduits here connect the extraction wells down to the main header that takes it back to the injection well that sits off in this corner over here. That project, by the way, will be complete by the end of November, and there will be some transfer of that ownership of that project at that time. And that's the last we have of the slides. Michael?
We actually have a few more slides. So what we thought would be helpful is to give that background and give you a little highlight of what's going on on the site because a lot of people, when they say, "Where's the development?", they're thinking immediately, "Where's the vertical development? Where are the buildings?" With this site being what it was historically and all the work that needs to happen, this is a monumental task that is being undertaken right now to do this horizontal infrastructure. And at any given time, there's approximately, how many people out there? Around 190 to 200 people. So clearly, you know, this is not a small job, which we all know, but even this first phase, which is largely overlooked, is still a very big project. Now, to give a little bit more color on the residential parcels that we're talking about acquiring and proposing to acquire with the city of North Miami, you can see them highlighted in red here. And what we wanted to do was show some potential conceptual renderings that we've explored with several different designers over the past several months. Again, these are high-rise towers. You can see there's a water feature creating an amenity. And again, very lushly landscaped and something that'll create new visual image for the North Miami landscape. This is a view actually looking to the, to the south. And you could see pools on top of the parking garages, which are largely obscured and blocked with trees to ensure that the sightlines and the walking experience for the residents are of optimal quality. Once again, another view with a large water feature that allows for passive and recreational use. One thing I want to stress is obviously these are renderings. Things change quite a bit. Designs change and, you know, different ideas and different interests as the markets change as to what happens. This is, I wanted to give a little more color also on the retail. Initially, what everyone had seen for Biscayne Landing two years ago was a big-box retail center with very large parking lots and something that not necessarily would have been the most attractive element. That is something we have focused in very acutely on, speaking with several very interested residents of North Miami, as well as with your council, and worked with quite a bit of different retail developers to focus on trying to create what would be a retail lifestyle center. And while there's still some bigger stores here, which would be things such as a large health and fitness gym, a high-end movie theater, a Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, we've also been talking with developers who are focused on trying to get some of the smaller, more boutiques-type stores, i.e. Victoria's Secrets, Bloomingdale's Outlet, the J. Crew Outlet, and other retailers of that nature. And in addition, over here along the lake, you could see the idea of trying to create an area that is more of an entertainment area, so some waterfront dining, which would be fantastic, potentially again, the high-end movie theater. And we've been talking with several different smaller boutique grocers. Just this morning, I did speak with a broker that works closely with Trader Joe's. They were trying to get something in Aventura. Hopefully, North Miami would be something of interest to them. And these are some of the kind of concepts that this potentially could be. These are more of a lifestyle-type retail where people actually park and have an experience, not just coming in, running into your local Target, grabbing your necessary things and leaving. You go, you stop at Panera, get your coffee, stop off in the store, meet your wife or husband for dinner, et cetera. You could see some street parking to activate it. And one of the big things that we've done is really tried to look for ways to do structured parking, but structured parking in a manner that is much more acceptable to the eye than what you're used to seeing of just big, open decks that are large in concrete. Again, this would be the existing lake, Lake Ibis, which is right here with the waterfront And this could be the center of the retail, actually, which you see right in here. And this would be looking down. These are, these are visual images of other great examples that are both in South Florida and that we would hope to replicate. Now, one of the big things that we've always spoken about, a part of the benefit of selling the land so that we can create, build condos, is the benefit to the city, both respect to moving the project along more quickly and to tax revenues. When you look at what condominiums generate in terms of tax, on average, it's about three times the amount of property taxes to the benefit of the city than is multifamily rentals. So while in year one, at full buildout, the delta, sorry, year one, when you assume that there's only one building built, the delta would be roughly $3 million. You project that out 20 years at full buildout, and you have a delta in tax, increased tax revenues to the city of nearly $650 million. Clearly, that is a great, great benefit to the city of North Miami, and it's just part of the reason why we think doing the condo project is very important. So, thank you all.
And right now, you're gonna be able to ask him questions. And I'm asking, let me call Stephanie, Stephanie Thomas, please come here, please. And we're gonna have Pam and Stephanie for the questions. Whoever have questions, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we're just going to call upon the center aisle will be for public discussion. So if you have questions, comments, please line up at the microphone. We will limit public comments to three minutes per person. So please come forward, ask any questions that you have on the presentation this evening and on the appraisals, the potential sale, whatever your questions or concerns are, please raise them at this time.
Who do we direct a question to?
It's up to you, not to us, because we are here to listen.
Okay.
And I don't know, the expert, Olita, or maybe staff, maybe the city attorney or the city manager.
Okay. I'm gonna, okay. Just make a general statement then, since it's wide open. You all, the public officials here tonight said that they are going to vote on this Tuesday night's council meeting. Yet they don't have all the, they don't have all the documents read yet and a complete understanding. And you're having a town hall meeting on a Thursday night, gonna vote on one of the most important items ever to this city and the future of this great project, which it's gonna be, don't have an issue with the project. I think it is wrong at this time for the city council to address this issue on Tuesday when you do not have a full-sitted council. I believe you have an election in three weeks. I think the mayor, whoever it may be, and the council should have the opportunity to be involved in the discussion because they're gonna have to live with the lease that is, or the resolution that is adopted. There are a lot of safeguards that are not in that document. There's a lot of discussion that needs to be done. I think it is premature for the city management, for the members of the city council, or for the developer to push this item forward for a vote on Tuesday night. I think it is, I do not believe it is fair to the residents that the four members of the council, as hard as it's gonna do and work at this, should take this on, this task so quickly.
Mr. Kevin Burns, you say you don't think it's fair to the residents. Why is that?
Because there's no sitting mayor, the mayor that is representing the people citywide. There is no fifth elected official, which our charter calls to have five people representing this city. That is why. And if we want to get into debate of this, since you all elected officials are here to listen to public comment, but if you want to go back and forth, I have plenty of other reasons why the council should not be voting on this. I don't believe you have the firsthand knowledge and have the documents in your hands since Councilman Galvin just got it two days ago and been ill or three days ago that it finally went online. You're talking about a document that you all have been working on for months, yet we're supposed to swallow it in four, five days? You're gonna look at it over the weekend and then make a decision for this item on Tuesday night? What is the rush? I understand the developer has to meet timelines and has to do the things that they gotta do, and I appreciate that. But I'm concerned about the residents of North Miami, that whoever the mayor may be, that they're involved with it. Too many times, the leases and the documents that have been signed by Biscayne Landings have not always protected the best interests of the city. Again, this project has been delayed 18 months. Three more weeks isn't gonna hurt the city, it's gonna help us. And I don't want to hurt the developer, but we have to worry about what's best for our residents for the next 90 years that we have to deal with this. And I'm not even getting into the appraisal process, the conceptual plans or any of that. It's just strictly that, it's not an item that should be addressed this Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am gonna get into the appraisal process. I haven't taken any real estate or appraisal courses since the mid-'70s, but I don't understand why the encumbrance of the lease had the effect of the valuation of the property. You didn't need three highly sought-after appraisers. If you're gonna use the valuation of the lease and plug in percentages, you could've called J.G. Wentworth, because this is like cashing in on an annuity. I think if you gave me all the same percentages that you're using and you're taking the valuation, I could've figured this out in one afternoon with a calculator, and not really a big one either. So it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me. If you sell the property, the lease is over and done with for that portion of the property. So you're dealing with a total different valuation. And if, and if you were using the valuation of the lease and a 3.4% this and a 5.6% that and plugging all those percentages, why did one guy come up with $12 million and the other two were 19 and 21? They should've been within $100 of each other if they're all using the same valuations. So it doesn't make any sense. Wait, let me make sure I get everything I wrote down here.
You're doing good. You don't want to be snubbed.
Right. That's basically it. I don't, I don't agree. Why would you, it doesn't make any sense to me why you, the encumbrance of the lease is the valuation of the property.
He's gonna answer your question.
I'll stay here till he answers.
First of all, the question of the simple evaluation, there were two parts to it. None, the first one was the value of the lease. The second part, which was not as simple as just using numbers, was to be able to get to a reversion factor. The reversion is what the value at the end of the lease is in today's dollars. In order to do that, you had to value the property. So part of the appraisal is a valuation of what the value of that property is on the market today. In order to do that, the appraisers had to go through a normal appraisal methodology where they had to go out and find comparables, make the various assumptions and changes and balances to bring it back to a piece of this size and create a value of that property today.
Let me stop you right there. Where was that, where is that value in this picture? Why weren't we just given that value? Because if you're looking at the value of that property today to sell it, that's what you should be talking about. Why did you have to go beyond that to include the lease? Because once you sell it, the lease is not a factor. And if you don't sell it, then the lease is the only thing that's worth anything and you're gonna get the same, basically, you're telling me you're gonna get the same amount of money if we keep this property for 99 years? And in today's market, if we could take $20 million and whatever you can buy an annuity for in 99 years, that's what we would be getting? So it's either give it to me now for less money, or that's what I'm gonna get in 99 years?
Because the property was encumbered by the lease.
Okay, so if I'm gonna sell it, I'm not gonna keep the lease. It doesn't make sense. Where, where's the sense? One is over if you sell it. If you don't sell it, you have the lease. So why would you need both valuations? If you're gonna just value it on what is it worth if we keep it for If you're going to just value it on what is it worth if we keep it for 99 years at today's money, that's different than the actual valuation of the property to put homes on it and get property tax.
What I was saying was that the appraised value consists of two parts. One is the net present value of the lease. Okay, you agree with me on that? Because the lease is there. The second is the reversion. What the reversion amounts to is finding out the value, which is the process that the appraisers had to go to. They came up with three different appraisal numbers. They then reverted that, they inflated that with an inflation value to the 99th year, and then they took the net present value of that all the way back.
All you're telling me is you're giving me the basic value today of what we would have gotten in 99 years.
You couldn't because you have a lease on there.
But then if I keep the lease, that's what I'm going to get.
No, if you're going to keep the lease...
Correct.
The question is, what's the value of that lease? Do you want to know what the value of that lease is today because they have the option to buy it and they can buy it at that number? Or do you want to keep that lease over 99 years at the end of which, no doubt about it, it's a very big number?
Right.
Okay? But the decision...
Are we forced to sell this property on this option?
You are not forced to sell it.
Well, then, keep it. Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Frank Woland, 12865 West Dixie Highway. And to continue a little bit as a question of the discussion, but I think everyone should be asking this question, if you keep the lease, what is the value of that? In other words, how many millions of dollars is the city going to get every year? And how is this going to affect it? Because I'm not sure I understand. I understand that they're saying, "Let's value the reversion." What the lease at the end, it gets bigger every year, so now it's much smaller. So I understand why the developer would want to buy it now. I was a little curious as to how the, when the item first came up on the agenda a month ago or whatever it was, it came up on the agenda as two items that were together was we, you know, the developer's going to agree to remove the dirty fill and you're going to, the city's going to sell us 50 acres. And everybody who was at that meeting said, "What is that about? What does the 50 acres have to do with removing the dirty fill?" And I called the guy who I think is a fantastic, you know, he's an expert, he's done like 50 big deals, and he referred me to someone more knowledgeable. And I explained what I was doing at the meeting. I said, "What are these units worth? How much, not an acre, but how much per unit that you would have the right to build?" And in the analysis, it was really only Mr. Gallagher who spelled out in his analysis that he was valuing the right to build at $20,000 per potential unit, which times the 3,052 units is about $60 million. And then, as I understand, Mr. Winston, well, we've discounted that number down to get to the end. So I don't know if you discount it down to get to the end if we're still getting the lease payments and the profit payments and all the other money in the meantime and how much that would be or if we're giving that up. But putting that aside, what the expert said to me was, "Well, Mr. Woland, the first question I have to ask you is," because I have to come up with a value per unit, "Have they cleaned up the landfill yet?" And I said, "Gee, you know, that's a good question." He says, "Well, you better ask that question first because that's the most important question." You know, I understand this is...
Mayor Woland, what is your question tonight? Just comments or you have a question?
I have mostly comments, but some questions, like the question, the first question I asked.
You want dicks? You want...
I'm happy, I'm happy to be interrupted. If he wants to answer the questions, that's fine. I'm happy to wait till the end. However you want to do it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. You want to answer the question?
Do you want me to restate the question?
Yeah.
Okay. Happy to help. So my question is, I understand you're putting a value on the reversion, what it would be worth at the end. I understand that. In the meantime, is the city going to be getting all of the payments under the lease, the lease payments, the profit payments, the payments each time they complete a new condo? Are we still going to get all that?
Yeah. All, the only portion that's being addressed is the 50 acres, which is...
No, no. But my question is, for those 50 acres, we're going to get all that other money in the interim every year anyway?
Yes.
Let him answer.
You will be able to read the agreement.
He's the developer.
Is it online? The agreement is online.
Okay. And I ask this, sir, because I understood you to say, "Well, we're not going to get the profit portion of that." I don't know what that meant.
In the lease, there is, aside from the lease payment, the annual lease payment with escalations, which stays the same, okay? For the residential portion, there is a profit participation of either the rent or the sale price.
Right.
It's agreed upon between the developer and the city.
Sure.
That doesn't change.
So the city will continue to get the profit participation on the 3,000 units they build on the 60 acres?
That's correct.
On the 50 acres, yes.
That's correct.
Okay. You have answered my question. Thank you. I will continue with my comments if it pleases you, Mr. Mayor.
Just wanting to keep in mind, as I mentioned at the beginning, the developer is exercising their right to purchase the 50.3 acres per the original lease. The only thing that is changing is that they are buying out the lease option, what I see the lease option for the residential portion of the site.
I understand.
This is the only thing that they are purchasing.
But, but, Mr....
They are not physically purchasing. This is not a regular piece of land that you could go out there and purchase. You have a developer, you collected $24 million, $25 million already from this developer. He has a lease, a present lease. What we are doing, money has a value. There's a present worth for money and a future value.
I understand all that.
We have valued that money over a 99-year period. We have calculated it. I don't want to get into the deltas and all of that for you, but I could tell you the value that we are getting now based on the 3,000 units per acre for our code is how these evaluations and appraisals were done. As I said in the beginning, exactly what is in that report, every one of those reports is justified and can be defended.
I understand that. All right, let me continue with my comments if I may. And as I understand it, you're saying something a little different than what Mr. Winston said, because Mr. Winston said, somebody asked him, "Do we have to sell?", and he said, "No, we don't." And you're saying, "Under the lease, yes, we do." Am I confused?
No, that, okay, go ahead.
Under the present lease, there's an option for purchase or sale of the property.
Right. If they exercise the option, must we sell?
No, we don't. We could say no. The city could say no.
Okay, then that's fine. I just wanted to be clear, because like I say, I have a lot of questions and confusion, and I'm here to ask my questions, to make my comments, to maybe clear it up for myself and the other people here.
I want the city attorney to come over here, please. Go ahead with your comments.
Okay. Thank you. So after my expert said, "Well, you know, have they cleaned it up?", and I said, "No, you know, they brought in some dirty fill, but if we agree to sell them the land, they're going to remove the dirty fill." He said, "Well, when are they going to do that?" I said, "I don't know." He says, "How much, you know, now we're talking about cleaning up the landfill and finishing that. Is the city still going to be paying the backend of the landfill cleanup even though they are now going to own the land?" That's a second question.
All environmental obligations under the existing lease is going to continue.
Is the city still going to be footing part of the bill?
No.
No part of it? No part of the cleanup?
No part, okay. Let me, let me get into it. The landfill has three components for closure. The groundwater remediation system, which is the $14 million contract with CH2M Hill. The second portion is the stormwater management system for the site, and the third component for the complete closure of the landfill is capping the site with two feet of clean material. That is considered by all the regulatory agencies in the state and the county to be a complete closure of this landfill. Presently, the groundwater system, Phase 1 is in. Phase 2 of the system would be completed by the end of November. When that is completed, we, under the grant that the city...